So this is the regular meeting of the Planning Commission. What are we, April, May, May 19, 18?
No, I think we're the 20th.
No, today's the 18th.
Oh my gosh.
Twenty twenty-one, calling this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. We do have a forum at 7:05. So do you want to do a roll call? Just go around the table. Jim, you want to go first?
Yes, Jim Winchester.
Hi, Jim.
Tiffany Zwenga.
Fred Miller.
Megan Randall.
Hi.
Yeah, Rebecca Dragon, yes, representing the Select Board today.
So we are going to read through this.
Yep, and we got Mike Gardner here too, who was here as the zoning administrator, correct, Mike?
Correct.
All right, so the agenda for tonight is approval of the agenda, approval of minutes, discussion flying objects in the bylaws, discussion tiny homes, discussion economic development, public comment, and then adjourned. So can I get a motion to approve this agenda? Okay, we gotta.
You gotta roll call your votes.
Is that good?
Okay, Jim, we're gonna vote. You go first.
Approve. Yes.
Yep.
Tiffany, yes?
Fred?
Megan, yes.
Okay, so they're approved. So does everybody have a copy of the minutes from last meeting, April 27? Jim, did you get a copy?
Yes, I do have one.
So can I get a motion to approve the minutes from April 27?
I move the motion.
Second?
Second.
Do you second that motion?
Okay, so those were approved. All right, moving on. Oh yeah, roll call vote. So Jim, you go first.
You. Approved.
Tiffany, yes?
Fred, yes.
Yes.
All right, now they were approved. Okay, so now we're on to discussion flying objects in the bylaws.
Would you guys, can I make a suggestion? Would you like to discuss the letter from the Select Board first? I don't believe that made it on the agenda, did it?
Oh, it did not make it on the agenda.
You can add it. It's a regular meeting. It's not a problem, but I just want to, you know, that's why I'm excited. Just to make sure all of you got that letter from the Select Board about where the bylaws are at. They were really impressed with them, just a couple little changes they wanted to see, then we'll go through that fun hearing process again. But I just want to discuss that first.
Yeah, okay, we'll just add that in there. Three.
It's attached, oh, here you go. It's underneath the agenda. I already gave you yours, right?
No.
It's attached. Yeah. Oh, sorry, agenda. I maybe gave you the wrong one. Here.
I got one.
You got one?
Yes.
And if you want to take a minute to read that. Jim, did you get it?
Yes, I do have it.
Do you want me to read it out loud since we're, so everyone knows what you're reading? Okay.
So I actually wrote this on behalf of the Select Board, so this is what everyone's evaluating right now. Attention, Planning Commission, last Thursday, May 13th, the Select Board held its second public hearing on the draft bylaws. I've been asked to pass on their thoughts about the draft and also to detail the few changes they're asking you to review and apply before returning to the hearing process. The board was incredibly impressed at how much more streamlined the new bylaws are. The changes they are requesting are not a statement of displeasure with the draft at all, but just a couple places of adjustment they would like to see. The changes they are requesting are as follows. They would like to, they need to add some language regarding tiny houses, which is on your agenda tonight, defining them, classifying them by use as accessory dwellings and/or single-family homes. Would like to increase the allowed number of unregistered cars on private property to three, which they believe matches the state regulation without a timeline for getting them registered. They're asking for you to research the state regulations on that as well. The board would like for you to research adding penalties for having more than the allowable amount of unregistered cars on a property, a per-month fine. They'd like it to match the state. Would like, so this was obviously, you're not going to decide all this tonight. This is for you guys to go forward. Yep. Would like for you to revisit the section on camps. They feel it's too restrictive. They would, the board would like for camps to be allowed without permitting on Forest RR1 and RR2, which is the current bylaw. After those changes are made, you will hold another hearing of the PC on the draft, and then the board will host a series of public hearings again and vote on their approval. Additionally, to the above changes, but this will be after this process of the changes above, understanding this will be a longer process. They would like for you to start working on researching the possibility of finding some land that can be zoned industrial. So thank you so much for all of your hard work. This back and forth conversation between the Planning Commission, the Select Board, and the citizens is a part of the process of ensuring that the bylaws are seen and evaluated by as many people as possible. And I personally want to make sure you know that returning them to you for these changes only makes the bylaws more robust and complete, and is not a negative reaction to the really good work you all have done. And I know some of you are new to the Planning Commission, so welcome aboard. This is an opportunity to immediately get to work on something tangible and immediate, and Jim Sullivan of the BCPRC also stated he remains available to you all to help with these questions. He will certainly attend meetings and help guide you in that direction. Yes?
I thought that I had heard at the Select Board meeting that I caught, and probably was the thing about how many vehicles are allowed on property. But I thought they were addressing the question of how long you had to build once you got a permit. That they wanted to extend that. Is that incorrect?
So what, the thing about the cars is that the current draft bylaws are allowing one unregistered car on your property, and it can only be unregistered for 30 days. What they're saying is there's a lot of people with project cars, or they have a car that's.
There's no enforcement anyway.
Well, that's right. They, so they would prefer to see up to three unregistered cars with no time limit on how, correct me if I'm wrong at any point, Mike. And also to research what the state's regs are on that and try to just maybe.
That thing that I just imagined that.
Something might be something else, right?
That was, that would extend a lot of time people had to build. Building a project.
Oh, that was separate.
Oh, okay.
That was a different thing, and I think that that was just an administrative thing that you guys were able. Mike, do you remember that? It was about rebuilding after.
I, I remember that, and what happened was, a couple of the board, Select Board members wanted to extend, one member in particular wanted to extend the new bylaws proposal is a three-year time span to start rebuilding and a three-year time span to finish, which gives you a total of six years. And we had a motion on the floor to go to five and five, which would make it 10 years, and that motion failed. So that, that's a moot point, Megan, but you were actually correct. That was the, the only other correction that I see in this statement was under the camps. And it wasn't, it wasn't that we didn't want any permitting to be, where it says, we're going to revisit the section on camps. Now, Fred actually brought this up I think the Tuesday night public hearing, if I remember correctly, which was a great point, Fred, because you're absolutely correct. In the new proposed bylaws, on RR2 and RR1 districts, camps are not allowed at all, no matter whether it's by permit or not. So our proposal was to allow camps on RR1, RR2 with permitting. It's the same as it would be in national forests.
Who knows? You guys caught it, you guys caught it.
Good idea. Seems to me done in national forests.
Actually, actually, you know, the important thing is you involve the listers here. You know, if someone builds a camp, I could build a camp up here, but without the listers knowing it, what good is it? You know, it's, we've got the land here, and there are a lot of people that should go on, you know? And that's absolutely true, Jimmy. And the other thing is, the other thing is, you know, a camp designation is much different than, than a house. You know, camps generally don't have, you know, facilities, toilets, and whatever. So, you know, it just falls under a little bit different criteria, but the big thing is in RR1 and RR2, you know, for instance, at your house, Megan, if you, you guys didn't want, or wanted to build a camp, a family camp somewhere just to go to, the way that the new proposed bylaws read, you would not be allowed to build that camp on your property.
Well, I, I. We should be able to.
Yeah.
We, I have a son who has a fantasy about it. Down by the brook and the ground.
Revisit you, but doesn't really, right, I get it.
Yeah, he'll never do it, but, okay, so we say, and are we agreeing that we think it would be better?
Well, no, you're not discussing that now.
Oh, okay.
You're not, these are things that you, these are jobs. This is what's being returned with. You guys will make a plan as to who's going to work on which aspect, and you can do that tonight for sure, but you have your other agenda items. I'll stop interrupting now.
Is that it, Rebecca?
That's it for the Select Board stuff. I'm not leaving. I'm getting a drink of water. I'll be right back.
Well, I just want to say that I appreciate.
All right, so now we're gonna go to flying, flying object. Megan, you wanted this on the agenda, so specifically drones, right?
Yeah, you know, I just heard, no, I, somebody mentioned it to me, that the drone, that there's nothing in the bylaws, or what?
About drones? I, I thought, I thought that we talked about it last year when we were at the, we weren't zooming or anything, so there's no recording of it, but.
I recorded all of it.
I don't know, but I, I think so. But when we were at the rescue squad, we talked about it. We talked about helicopters, we talked about drones when Jim Sullivan was there, but I can't for the life of me remember what we said about it.
So I, to me, it would seem that there's another case where there's bound to be state laws about it. And that I think we just want to follow along with those.
Yeah, when I looked at, I looked for the state legislature, and I think all I could find was that they did something about warrantless searches.
Searches.
So.
Oh, would that be like the police, police use of drones?
And I think they, they did mention elevation. You know, close to power lines would not be good.
Do you, do you want to talk to Jim, Jim Sullivan?
Jim Sullivan, or I'm sure there's a lot of other resources you could, I'll help anyone.
Do you want to research that?
Sure, I'll do that, sure. And I, you know, I thought I'd research, talk to the only person I know who actually has drones and who uses them, but I think he's very.
I do know some people locally post some really nice pictures taken from drones.
Oh, that's true.
You got to speak up.
That'd be, that'd be.
Some, some local people have been online posting some really nice pictures taken from drones, and we don't want to discourage that. We don't want to even come in anywhere close to discourage or something like that.
Pictures of foliage are unbelievable.
Um, I, I can't speak definitively to that. Mike, you might know, is it in the current bylaws?
What's that?
Drones.
Drone? There's, there's nothing that I have seen in the bylaws about drones at all. The, the last bylaws were written in 2011, so.
Pre-drone times.
That's probably a little pre-drone, I would think, yeah.
Well, you know, I just heard.
Sorry, it's just it's hard to.
I heard somebody describing walking on the beach and having some kids just dive bombed here with a, with a drone. So, I mean, it could, they could be really misused. Unfortunately, it's gonna be like everything else. How do you enforce this stuff?
Well, it would be good researches for you to see what have other towns said about them, and do they have something that says like you're not allowed to use your drone to go into someone's personal space, or whatever it is, you know?
Kind of what?
Well, because.
Do we kind of want that? I don't know.
I wonder, I bet you there's language out there, some research on it, where it's like you're not allowed to use it to invade people's personal, private space, or, you know?
Well, it's all about footage, because they have larger mine of it. It's all about footage height.
How high up?
I can fly it over your house.
Right, but you can't fly it in my bedroom window.
No, I have to say a certain height.
That's right.
There's a height restriction, but I can fly it over your house, though. There is a real gray area there.
Yeah.
It's really not that gray. But you should address it.
Well, if you're out, you know, murdering your wife in the backyard.
That's right, then you want the drone.
No, you don't want.
Wants the drone.
Your wife wants the drone. Yeah.
So, so there's good and bad with the drones. It isn't a problem in Plano right now, but eventually it's going to come to the front burner.
Probably not.
But it's pretty free. Add it off, just in case.
Goosey goosey around here.
Okay, so Megan's gonna research that.
Okay, I'll check that out. So I will check the state, what's current in the state.
And what other towns have done.
And other towns. And I will ask. And anybody else, if you know anybody who uses them, ask them.
You know, you know a little bit about them. What do they need to know?
That's why I know that you can, that's why I'm aware of the fact that there really are not many restrictions statewide or locally, I'm sure. They are, there are no-fly zones around airports.
Right.
Most of the drone manufacturers have those limitations in the drone already. In other words, I have a few drones. At my house in Florida, one of my offices is near a local airport. I can't even, the drone won't take off, because the GPS in the drone knows exactly where it is. So there's a no-fly zone.
That is interesting. Kind of creepy.
It is. But that doesn't stop me from flying over your house. That's true. It's very true, I mean.
You won't see much, believe me.
So.
And anything you do see, you deserve it. Sir, you're right.
Those big windows.
Okay, all right, moving on. So now we'll do tiny home discussion. I don't remember who wanted to talk about this.
I think you should be assigning, you should, well, Mike Gardner wanted it to be brought up, but I think really tonight, just as a suggestion, you should be assigning these to people to go and do that baseline research on it and come back to the next meeting to actually create language with Jim Sullivan in tow.
And I think this is a really potentially relevant. This needs to be a whole set of rules and regulations.
Yeah.
Yes.
No, it's okay.
Yeah, this is definitely something you guys want to have a really stout set of regulations about, like, because I visited this in Florida, in the town I live in, you know.
In a town full of trailers, what do you get, what do you get to say against tiny homes, you know?
Go bed quickly.
Yeah. Tiny home can start out really cute.
Well, but they, but it's 10 tiny homes on one property is when it becomes a problem.
Yeah, exactly.
So.
Well, that's what, you know, I'm thinking, we have a minimum lot size for, just for a normal home, you know?
Yeah.
Even a small bungalow still has that minimum lot size. We don't need to make it any smaller just because it's a tiny home.
Oh, no.
But if it's got wheels on it, it's a tiny home.
Well, that's, if you go back and watch the, Jim Sullivan did address that in talking about the difference between an accessory dwelling versus a single-use, like this is like full-time residence. So you're gonna have to create some language around that, but Jim will work with you on that, you know, that's not something you decide now.
This has got to be well researched and really.
Well, does anybody here want to take that on, tiny homes? Anybody?
Well, there's, there's four members that aren't here that you could assign it to, because they don't, they can't consent.
Well, I'll work with somebody on it. I think it's interesting. I'm interested, but.
I'll dig up some of the local stuff. When I'm involved in the drafting, I'd be happy to pass it along.
Sure.
It, it's, it's gonna require some real.
I'm sure Jim Sullivan has.
He gave some good advice on it at the Thursday meeting. I'd listen to him about it, but it's new.
Megan.
A language around it is new.
Yeah, I think, yeah, because you know a lot about building and that stuff. I think Jim was saying that to treat it like, like you were saying, treat it like a house.
If it's being used as a home, it should be treated as a home, and if it's an accessory dwelling, let it be an accessory dwelling.
Yeah.
If it's temporary, like an RV, and it's gone wheels, and it's, you know.
Do they typically have, have an axle attached to them?
Some of them do.
Yeah, some of them. They'll build them on a bed.
So they're like a mobile, like a mobile home.
They can be.
So you really think, I mean, I, I was hearing so much about tiny houses pre-COVID, and all of a sudden, they went off the radar. Maybe it's just a trend.
Right, well, no, they went off the radar because lumber prices went up so high.
I don't think.
Okay, you know, we need, we need affordable housing and.
And it's like modular homes. Modular homes, they have wheels on them. In Florida, that's how they, as long as you leave the wheels on them. Now you put skirts around them, but as long as you leave the last part on it, so that's how this.
Okay.
So we'll work together on that. Um, so now discussion economic development.
Um, I'm gonna let you know, as, as from what I'm doing with the Select Board, is that I am presently working on a plan, like a more of like memorialized grant process for the town that involves more people than just me. And so part of that grant process, I do all the grants researching and writing, and then, you know. So it really, in order to be more of a robust program, I'm creating a process that I'm going to recommend bringing back an economic development committee that will also work in collaboration with Parks and Rec, because those two committees will get, get hit on opposite ends of that. So I, just so you know, that is something that I'm working on. You guys, as the Planning Commission, you do talk a lot about the village designations. You're the ones who help create them. And so there is certainly a role for you in that aspect as well, but just you know that I am advocating for the return of that.
Will that be appointed by the Select Board?
It would absolutely. It would be just as Parks and Rec is, it would be appointed by the Select Board. There would be a liaison from the Select Board involved in it the way that I am with Parks and Rec. I'm advocating that Tim would be the one with, who's representing. The Select Board will have the ultimate authority over what happens in there.
Okay.
And they will help set the agenda and all of that.
Fred, you have anything else to say? Because you were the one that wanted this on the agenda.
I still, I'd like to, you know, for, for the Planning Commission to actually visit our three designated villages in person. Get the sights and sounds, look at it, look it over and actually see what, just kind of like generate some ideas of what kind of potential it actually has or doesn't really have.
I think that's a great idea.
So go as a group, you mean?
Yeah, yeah. I know Jim, Jim has mentioned a couple of times, I've heard him mention the, the small piece of property on, on the eastern side of the racetrack, of the, of the railroad tracks, by the track. I don't know if anybody that he's talked to has ever gone there.
Yeah, he's taken us down.
Only he knows.
We went, the Planning Commission went down there last year. Yeah, Jim took us on a tour.
Yeah.
Just at the beginning of.
We did a tour, we did a tour, you know, the racetrack before the fire and the properties around town, you know? You're talking about economic development, but it looks like we're headed to be a bedroom community. And we need to find some land where we can, if you're going to be a bedroom community, we need more bedrooms.
Yeah, well, we have to officially designate this town bedroom community. The, the community itself should be involved in that rather than just the Planning Commission.
Well.
But right now, it isn't, it isn't officially a community as far as I'm concerned as a resident.
But what place is officially a bedroom community? It's just a, it's a, that is not an official designation.
You're referring to your bylaws. It would be, what it, well, meaning not being called literally. It just means like whatever your bylaws say and allow, what your regulations allow is what makes it.
Well, the bylaws were, we were really careful to make sure that the bylaws are allowed for economic development.
I think that's why the Select Board was asking for you guys to start looking at some, at some area that can be labeled industrial, and can be set aside for that. But that's a separate conversation they asked for you to do later, but.
No, as I've mentioned before, our precious swamp here. We can't, we can't, landowners can't do anything with that property. The town can't do anything with that property. And, but what good is it? It's ugly. We can't, can we dress it up? Can we do anything?
What, you're talking about right to the end of the road here?
Does, does our swamp even have a name?
The pussywillows are beautiful and they ring.
Called Pussywillow Park.
Yeah, those are.
So you can research that, is what you're saying. Research use.
Is there a way to make it attractive to, to, maybe that would, that would give a jumpstart to the, to the economic development in that area? Right now, it's, it's a eyesore. I said, nobody wants to, nobody wants to move in there.
Really, because of the?
Business? Ugly.
You mean with a?
Traffic, traffic is zooming through town, and they're not even looking at that swamp. It's just like, straight ahead and out of here.
But I mean, I would say Dollar General is a heck of a lot uglier than a bunch of bushes.
No, not really.
I mean, or is that, that guy next to the?
If you go into the parking lot of Dollar General and look across the street, I think that's uglier than Dollar General.
Or the guy, the guy who buys gold and silver?
We're talking about.
That's another issue that's been going on for a long time.
We're talking about the same.
Hopefully, hopefully Mike's still working on that.
Wait, what are you saying, Fred?
Let's, let's look at our.
Another issue.
Let's look at our designated villages and start thinking of ideas, things that we can do to jumpstart some.
Encourage businesses to come here, because there's properties, there's most, there's a market in place, there's the roof. There are tons of properties that
They're owned by.
Potentially.
No, no, no.
They haven't, they're not designated.
Nobody wants to sell them. I mean.
They're talking about village designations, which is a state definition in a certain area. When you have an official village designation, of which we have three, you are, you do qualify for more programming, you get higher points in grant applications, and you also get, if you develop a business in those areas, there are tax credits and other programs that private business owners can participate in if they're in the village designation. So there is room for, you know, unders, for, to completely understand village designations. Tim and I had a meeting with Richard Amore, who's in charge of the whole village designation program for Vermont. He's fascinating. I would highly recommend inviting him to come and speak.
Good idea.
Richard Amore.
Richard Amore, and he's, and Mike Slattery is the one who introduced me to him, but he manages all the village designation programs of the state. He's a fascinating guy. He knows everything about what's available in those areas for businesses when they come, or, you know, the benefits of designating those areas. I do suggest, he's a great resource, so. I would, that's, that's a great place to start.
Do you have his contact info?
If you, if you Google him, it will come up. Vermont Amore, M-O-A-M-O-R-E.
I, it seems to me that right here, right across the street, there is, there's one building at least for sale that I look at it and think, if, see if I had, you know, 500 grand to throw away, what a cute cafe that would be. And this town desperately needs some cafes, you know? And, but I think that's more of a priorities.
What kind, what kind of infrastructure do you need for, for a cafe?
I don't know. I don't know.
Well, they're on sewer, they have everything they need. There's a cat, there's a restaurant going in down on Route 7 in a vill, in the village designation. That just has gone through its permitting process. Apparently, there's another one in the works, from what I understand. I think it's in the permitting process now. So these things are happening, and it's, and it's great. The question obviously always comes down to what is government's role in making that happen, right? How much can you do? What can't you do? And so that's a really great thing to start asking those questions and researching, and, you know, the more the Planning Commission understands about what is what and what programs are available, it's a great thing. And then if we can bring in an economic development team too, you know, many hands make light work here.
When we, when we designated the three, the three village designations, we did it here at this table.
I remember.
With maps, with just squares on it, with colored squares.
That was during the whole town planning.
We didn't, we didn't, we didn't look at the areas. We didn't look at the housing in those areas. We did nothing like that.
Yeah.
So that's, I'm talking about being boots on the ground, looking at things and thinking about things and talking about things. Whether we can, we can help anything happen or not, but just, you know, taking an approach where, you know, we are interested in, in, I'm, I'm, at least I'm speaking for myself, I'm interested in Plano being more than just a bedroom community. I'm, I'm interested in seeing some businesses thriving, people working in the town that they live in, that they sleep in. Those are the things that I, I'm interested in seeing, and whether we can ever get that back. Uh, those are the things that I I'm interested in seeing. And whether we can ever get that back in this town or not, right now, it's just a matter of opinion until we actually do some work and and ask questions and and answer and get the answers.
Again, I think I think it's a great idea. I I would love the opportunity to see.
Yeah, I think we really, really need to go and.
Especially from my perspective as a developer in real estate, I would really be interested in seeing what opportunities exist.
Yeah, okay.
So if you.
Sounds like a plan. We'll set that up for soon.
You know, just pick a Saturday or Sunday, we want you to go meet.
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea.
Do you want to pick that tonight? You want to pick a day to a date tonight? Do that?
Well, do we need more people involved?
I don't think, we have, we can all vote on it.
Okay.
We have Jim here. Jim saved us.
Thank you, Jimmy. Save the day.
Okay, Saturdays. We're not gonna do Memorial Day weekend cuz nobody's gonna be around. There we go. Um, so that is this weekend, next weekend. So the next available weekend is June.
Five, June twelve.
June five, June twelve, June nineteen, or June twenty-six. I vote for June twelve.
I'm good with twelve, Fred, twelve.
Right, so far I'm open.
Any, any, any Saturday work?
Okay, and what time is good for everybody? Like eleven?
Ten or eleven?
Ten or eleven.
Yeah, can we do it earlier is better for me, but I don't care.
Okay, June twelfth at ten o'clock.
We'll meet here.
We'll all meet here. We're gonna do the little tour of the village designation. When? June twelve. Okay, I'll come if I can.
Oh, we get all three of them in or?
Tour, yeah, if we can't get them all in and we wanna.
It can't be that far apart, right, can they?
No, we need it right now. It can't be that far. We'll, we'll, we'll car train. Who can lead the car train?
The whole, the whole village area.
Tour of a village designation. Yeah, but we're not gonna walk from village area to village area.
No.
That would be crazy.
Walk around.
Okay, yeah, no, walk around, yeah.
So we'll meet here?
Did you just say we would meet here?
Okay, what's that? You set up the agenda, where we start, where we go first, second, third, lead the tour.
And and I, yeah, meet here, I would say, that's a great.
Meet here.
I would, I would, I would say the agenda to begin with, we would start with the center.
Yeah, walk around.
The center village, okay.
Well, work with Meg, work with Megan to write your agenda cuz you will have to warn it cuz you'll have a quorum. Fred and Megan will work on the agenda.
So, and we said not, it starts at ten. Something I do not like about.
And meet at town hall.
Who do I ask about history of?
History of?
The that, the center area.
What kind of, I may be able to help you?
The road went.
Oh, I don't know.
The road, the road was changed around nineteen sixty.
Joyce.
Jim?
Joyce.
Jim, will you?
Yeah. Yeah.
Wendy Hopkins probably knows a lot.
I, I don't know. I've been here since the sixties, so I I don't know what to tell you. Uh, there's been some changes.
Around the time the racetrack went in, that's when they changed.
Well.
On the street.
You know, like, when I came here, you you could have, you could have four jobs, you could have five jobs.
Yeah.
I mean, it is just between the tannery, the racetrack, the cable, uh, it just was a fabulous place, really. And uh for some reason, it just all went away and hey.
All over the country, though, it's not just panel.
Oh, yeah, we know that. But I mean, it's just, you know, you're trying to grab what you can get. You know, we missed a big opportunity when the spruce is closed in Reeves Town. We had a lot of people looking to come here and there was nothing to speak of and you know, it it's, we we've been through a lot of highs and lows here and uh that was a missed opportunity. We didn't have anything. We didn't have any land designated for anything. When the spruce is closed, there was very, very nice people.
The opportunity you're talking about there, Jim, is is housing, right?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
As of.
Industry, well, I don't see them knocking at our door, but you never know.
We're not knocking on anybody's door, but you know, you wanna, you wanna paint your town up a little bit and make it attractive.
Our, our job to make it appealing for those industry to come, that industry to come here.
You know, but if anybody's gonna, anybody's gonna call Vermont, up north's gonna cherry pick the industries and keep it there, you know? I mean, they they got opportunities to give things. We really can't offer anything uh like they can in Montpelier. You know, they're gonna cherry pick and and get the best, sad but true.
I know, that's that's the nature of them right now. So, you know, it's very top-heavy.
Oh, yeah.
Montpelier gets everything. And we don't even exist. We're northern Massachusetts as far as I know.
I know, it's been there way a long time, but uh.
All right, so Fred and Megan are gonna work on the agenda for the twelfth at ten o'clock. We're all gonna meet here. Any public comment? I don't see any public. Mike, Mike, do you have public comment?
I've got a couple of things, if you guys don't mind, to give you kind of an update. It's not really, I guess, a public comment, but it would be comment from the zoning administrator um of some things that are going on in town that the planning commission probably um would wanna know about. So some of our, some of our properties, the the um Roos Building, I have to do a zoning verification on that, so apparently that's been sold. I I've talked, I've talked to the, to the person I believe who bought it. Um, there's a business going in there. I don't really wanna divulge what it is until she actually takes ownership. But she's looking at getting some, some stuff in there. It's gonna be, you know, in my estimation, it's really good for the town. Um, I heard, I think it was Megan brought up the um Roos Southern Property North of Dollar General. We have a zoning permit application right now um so that, um, they do have a vendor's license from the state of Vermont. I've seen that. So, but they do have a zoning permit application to come before the development review board. Which should help us a little bit, Megan, I I I anticipate it, helping um maybe make it a little better to look at. You know, but that's, that's up to the D R B, that's nothing to do with me or or the planning commission, so um, that could be a forward-moving process for sure to help us out. Um, I heard the mock shop came up in in one of your conversations a little while ago when I was listening. I know there was a gentleman who was, who came to me and and um asked me a bunch of questions on some different things to go in there. He was looking to buy it, um, did his homework through the state. And I don't know everything that he was putting in there. And this touches on what Fred brought up. Um, it's gonna be a little difficult to do certain things in there because of the wetlands. But it's not, it's, it's property that's people are looking at it. People are looking to come here. People are, people are really looking to come here and do some different things. Seems like there was one or two other things. Oh, I know, I know, um Dwyers, I'm, I've been in contact with with Ron and Olden. Um, we we talk all the time back and forth about different ideas to go on down, down to um the old turn of memes, um, uh, Carcela. So I think there's some potential going on down there. I I think that's gonna be, I think that's gonna be a great hub to get things started. And and I just, they get a lot of ideas, they're bouncing them off me back and forth. We talk about it. You know, yes, you can, no, you can't, sure, you know, I, I think you can type thing. You know, there's, there's a lot of ideas that are going on. So I think, you know, I I think we're, I know we're moving in a really positive direction townwide right now. I I have a really good feeling about that because I have had a lot of phone calls and a lot of inquiries about so, you know, the two or three or four commercial properties that that are available right now that that are zoned in that, in that area.
Mike, maybe when we talk to Richard uh Amore, you should prop, maybe be here too, so that since these people are coming to you to talk about businesses in the village designation, you can have some insight into what some of the uh perks are in your business here. And we're gonna do that.
No problem.
I would prioritize getting these bylaws done first so that you have solid approved bylaws to then talk about to the village. That's the next best step. Now talk to Richard Amore about the village designations and programming. Cuz a lot of it's gonna matter on whether or not you have these bylaws approved. So I would personally be prioritizing what the select board wants to see, the additions. And let's get that back to the hearing process right away.
Because if you have your bylaws down, then you're avail, you you get better, as you said earlier. You get better grants, better, better.
And these bylaws, the draft, are significantly less regulated, so it will, it does give more opportunity for businesses and, you know. It's more, it's more user-friendly, as everyone's been saying. We need to get them official. So we we need to assign, I, we have to go back a second cuz if we're gonna push this, these bylaws through and get them done, we need to assign the uh car, uh, the cars on private property um stuff to somebody to work on that cuz me and Megan are gonna work on the tiny houses. So we need to assign somebody to work on the the cars on private property um and the camps. So.
I, I think, if I could, I think, I think the camp thing is a fairly simple thing. I think that's just a matter of of changing the footage in the, in the proposed bylaws. If you go into the land use matrix, you you will see what it is. They're just not permitted at all in those areas. And I just think they need to be permitted. You know, and I think Fred, Fred probably could could really speak to that cuz he's the one that brought it up, uh, at our public hearing.
Yeah. Do you wanna, uh, do you want me to assign that to you or do you want me to take it?
I think Jim Sullivan could just write you some language at your next meeting. He'll just help you.
So maybe you could contact Jim and tell him your questions about it and put him.
First invite him to your next meeting.
Yeah, okay.
I'm, I'm just trying to simplify it for you, that's all.
That's a great idea. Um, and then the cars, dealing with the cars. I think I'm gonna give it to John Bashy cuz he knows a lot about all of that. So we'll give it to John Bashy and if somebody else wants to jump on and help them, they can.
There's no current bylaws with regard to the car written from scratch, correct?
No, 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 there's current, there's current, and they're, they're in the current and they're in the draft, but the draft is is too restrictive.
According to the select board.
According to the select board, they'd like you to revisit that, right? It doesn't match the state. It's far more, they, they were suggesting to look at the state regulations. Research it. You guys need to look into it. We don't need, that's not being decided tonight.
Right.
I think for clarity, just because the select board asked you to look into it, doesn't mean you have to change it. Because, because you guys are, you guys are the commission that sends them to us. So, you know, and I mean, I wanna be fair about that. At least, at least now I'm gonna switch hats and I'm gonna put my select board hat on and say, you know, just because we asked you to look into something, doesn't mean it has to be changed. And you guys may say, no, we don't wanna change that. This is what we want. And then that's, you know, then we have, then we have to hash it all back and forth, so.
All right.
My, my question on the whole thing with vehicles, is this adjusted to residential or is it?
Residential.
As a business?
No, that's separate. This is just residents, private residents who have an unregistered car on their property. That's it. The bylaws do address salvage yards, auto repair from home, home-based auto repair. There was, in fact, I was at one of those meetings where that was very much discussed and dubbed about what kind of, how much square footage in a shop and all that's in the draft bylaws. This is just private citizens.
All right, so I think that's it. So Paul, John's not gonna do that. Paul's gonna take on the cars.
There again, to me, I mean, just to put an opinion in, so you all know, it, it seems to me that I like having five derelict cars on your property is much more unattractive than having a bunch of, a little wetland.
Well, that's, but that's why you're talking about what number do you want? They also felt that just having one and only being allowed to be unregistered for thirty days was really restrictive as well for people.
That's the old, that's right.
No, that's the draft.
That's the draft.
Yes.
One is, yeah.
And then they were saying how, you know, the the state uh regs allow for three.
Three.
And then there's something about screening as well. It requires some research. You guys will have to do some research on it, yeah.
I think screening is a word you should make much of.
But once it starts getting bigger, when you talk about having the five, six cars, then you're talking about researching the fees. If you have that fourth car there, a fine for having it there per month, you know, if you're not screening, if you're not whatever. So this is a, 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 a way to kind of put a little control around it, but also not making it so restrictive that you've gotta.
That people go nuts. That's a good point.
I also think that if you're living way on a back road and.
Well, my property.
Yeah.
But 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 you can't, you can't, I don't think you can carve out exemption.
Well, if you're screened, if you're naturally screened, if you allow for screening.
But that's part of a bylaw, it's not an exemption. In other words, just cuz you can't see
Because you live way.
My property, cuz I live way up, that is effectively a screen.
Exactly.
So, in other words, the language has to read something along the lines of just a spitball, visible from the roadside. That's really what you wanna do.
Right.
The, the goal is to not have ten cars that are visible as you're driving down the road. But if I want to have ten cars, you wouldn't see them under, under any circumstances. So.
I, I agree with you there because I, I'm in the same boat. I mean, uh, panel is just pockets of places where you could put cars and never see them.
It's about what.
But uh.
Well, I mean, there, there was that guy over on, across the river, you could see all these derelict cars. He had like twenty-four cars and went up there with uh Jim. Uh, you know, he just, he 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 was running a, a business there, but a really bad business that wasn't making any money. And so the cars never moved and they were falling down the riverside and looked like heck. Well, not falling, but it looked, it looked like they were.
Many times we've gone along cleaning up the river. We pulled cars out of the river and, you know, in in the years of we grew a group.
Who would like to go on a dirt road and find a fifty-seven Chevy or something just sitting in the weeds?
Not bad.
For three hundred bucks, I'll take that away for, I'll take that away for you.
Otherwise, I'm gonna find you.
All right, so can I get a motion to adjourn our meeting? Oh, do we need to set our next date? Our next date is June, our next regular meeting is June first. Here at seven o'clock.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure you guys are on first and thirds. Thirds are optional for work.
Okay, and I think we're gonna need the.
Yeah.
Well, you're done. Good, 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 or done.
So this planning mission.
June first.
And Megan will send, Megan will send um.
Not at the fire department, the meeting at right here, right?
Yep.
When are we gonna get to meet in our new town hall?
Uh, we have a set date for the modular portion of the building on August thirty-one.
All right.
And once that's there, that happens very quickly.
Can I get a motion to adjourn before you chit chat?
I'm, I'm of the motion.
Okay, vote. Jim, you go first.
I.
Paul?
Yes.
Tiffany, yes. Fred? Megan?
Hi.
And we are adjourned. Goodbye.
Bye, Mike.